Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Hall Auditorium. I'd like to call together the Wednesday, November 16th, meeting of the School Committee. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now recording and live broadcasting this meeting. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence, and we'll observe that for all those in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. I would also like to, at this time, ask the committee to observe another moment of silence for Tom Dacowski. Tom was an engaging teacher, liked by everyone, caring and diligent, a science teacher here in Chicopee for 36 years. Tom served as the Science Department Head at Chicopee High School. He was adored by his family and his friends. Tom was involved in our community, active at his church, volunteered as a mad scientist at Jim Stefanik's annual haunted house, and an active member of the Friends of the River Mills Senior Center. A moment of silence for Tom Dacowski. Thank you. Sarah, can we have a roll call for attendance?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Barcello? Mrs. Perret?
Present.
Mrs. Scofield?
Here.
Mr. Shumsky? Mr. Lamath?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Loebz?
Present.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Ten present, one absent.
Thank you. Public announcements by committee members. I'll start to my left. Susan?
All set. Thank you, Mayor.
Dawn?
All set, Mayor. Thank you.
Grace?
All set.
Sam?
I just want to take the time to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Che.
I, too, would like to remember, like the mayor did, Tom Dacowski. Tom Dacowski was a student my first year in 1959 at Bow School. He knew a lot more about science than I did. He did a good job teaching it. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. We'll go to my right. All set?
I just would like to give a shout out of praise to our students who participated in the Veterans Day services and dedication to the new Veteran Monument at St. Rose Cemetery. Our students were Air Force Junior ROTC of Chicopee High School, the Chicopee High School Marching Band under the direction of Mr. David Kerr. Also at the event was an eighth-grade student from St. Stanislaw School, Sidney Benoit, who sang the National Anthem. All of the students represented themselves, their families, and their schools in an outstanding manner. They were poised, professional, and quite engaging in conversation. It was a real pleasure speaking with them and hearing how proud they were of their participation in the Veteran Day events. It was wonderful to see them salute our veterans. So, thank you to the students who were able to participate in this event.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. I'd just like to acknowledge the two new members that we will have joining our state legislative delegation in January, Rep. Shirley Ariaga and Senator-elect Jake Olivera. I look forward to working with them over the first, at least the first year of their time in office. And I'd like to thank outgoing Senator Lesser and Representative Wagner for their hard work on behalf of Chicopee for all these years. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge Tom Dacowski, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, we did serve for a brief time on the Charter Review Commission. He was a good guy and a member of the community that we all knew and loved, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ron.
All set.
Thank you. If I may, I've just had a couple of things I'd like to share with the School Committee and our viewing audience. I want to thank everyone who participated in our Puerto Rican Heritage Month flag raising. We appreciate the sponsors and contributors. It was a great response, well-attended by the community with and elected officials. Good Works Coffee was named, the owner of Good Works Coffee was named the Puerto Rican-owned Business of the Year, and we congratulated them with that achievement. Chicopee is an inclusive community, and we value the contribution of all cultures in our city. We recently just had a job fair. It was very successful in terms of attendance, with over 200 people attending. There are numerous positions unfilled in the city, and we continue to look for dedicated, hard-working individuals to work for the city. We offer an attractive benefits package and training opportunities. The School Department participated and held its own job fair, so we're slowly filling positions and appreciate the interest in our open positions. I'd like to take a moment, too, to congratulate the 34 students who were inducted in the Chicopee Comprehensive National Honor Society. The process is involved, and the students really were leaders and deserving of the induction. It's great to see such engaged and active students moving into positions of responsibility and leadership. Certainly, a great group of young men and women that are definitely our future. Veterans Day was a special day in Chicopee with ceremonies at Chicopee Comp Doverbrook, the Doverbrook Estates Memorial, St. Stanislaw's Basilica, a ceremony at Veterans Plaza in front of DuPont Middle School on Front Street, and a unveiling of a new memorial, I'm sorry, also lunch at the Cave C was provided on Council 69, and of course, the dedication that Sandra mentioned about the Veterans Memorial at St. Rose de Lima. The comp band added to the cemetery dedication with their performance and participation, and I'll tell you, it felt like Chicopee. It was over 300-plus people in the rain, and we're a patriotic, veteran-proud city, and it was great to be a part of that event. And with Thanksgiving approaching, I'm thankful for the work of resident city employees, city officials, and businesses, for all they do for the city of Chicopee. They truly care for each other and make Chicopee the place it is. And like I've mentioned before, it's no secret that Chicopee was one of the distinct honor of Reader Rave's Best City Town to Live In for 2023, and it's something we should all be very proud of. I certainly am as mayor. And lastly, COVID-19 vaccine booster shots are available at the Chicopee Housing Authority at Seven Valley View Court tomorrow from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Chicopee Public Library on Front Street on Tuesday, November 22nd from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. in Lorraine Soup Kitchen on 170 Pendexter Avenue on Saturday, November 26th from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. Be safe and take care of your families. Thank you. Next, Superintendent, public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight one of the programs we've been running since October 17th. It's a drop-in after-school support at the Chicopee Public Library, available to both middle and high school students. It's a free tutoring service. We have homework help, and we also have stress management. We have a tutor and a counselor that's on-site. It's Mondays and Wednesdays from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And also, the Chicopee Fresh Food Truck also provides free power snacks to students on these days, Mondays and Wednesdays. We'll be running this program all year long. Like I said, we start October 17th, and we'll be running up to May or the end of May. And also, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week, all our students, staff members, and their families. Hopefully, have a blessed and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Visitors. Oh, I'm sorry, we have no public input, so we'll move on to that now, visitors. We have the State of the District, Part One, Matthew Francis, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Accountability.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, I will be delivering Part One of a two-part series in the State of the District in regards to our data from 2022. That'll be tonight's delivery. Part Two is going to be December 7th, School Committee meeting, where I will go into more greater detail the areas for improvement and what the initiatives the district is taking for those areas of improvement. As you can see on the title page, the title of this year's State of the District is "The Road to Recovery." Last year, I stated that it was going to take three to five years to get back to pre-pandemic of where we were prior to in regards to our performance. By the end of this evening, I will highlight certain grade levels, certain buildings, and the subject areas of those buildings, grade levels, or subjects that are making progress towards going back to pre-pandemic performance levels. I'll be able to highlight for that by the end of the presentation. Our agenda for this evening is I will go through who we are as a district. I'll review our demographics for you. We'll take a look at the MCAS achievement level comparison, Chicopee to the state. We will focus in on grades three through eight and grade 10 ELA, three through eight and 10 in math, five and eight in science, as well as high school science. Additionally, I will take a look and highlight for you MCAS subgroup comparisons, Chicopee to the state. This will be done a little differently than that first group of data that I'll be presenting for you. We'll also take a look at how the Chicopee stack up against the urban districts. These are select urban districts that I highlighted last year for you as well, so I carried those over as comparison this year. We'll finish with the celebrations from this past school year, along with going into the areas for improvements. And like I had stated, we will continue the areas for improvements on December 7th. So, who are we as a district? Those are our numbers in regards to enrollment by gender. We have 53% male as compared to 46% female. Five students are non-binary. The state has a little bit lower male comparison at 51% and then 49% female, so there is a little bit of a discrepancy between Chicopee, but it's a slight discrepancy between Chicopee and the state. Our enrollment by race and ethnicity. Our largest race is our white population at 47%. Our students of color, when you add up all of our students of color, they are representing 53% of our district student body. Our additional subgroups. Our largest subgroup as comparison to the state is our low income. Our low income is at 71% compared to the state, which is close to 44. And then, I just want to highlight our high needs. This comes up in question from time to time. A high-need student is a student who is, that falls within the low-income plus one additional subgroup. So, the student can be a low-income ELL, thus they get categorized as a high need. A student might be a low-income African-American or Black student, then they would fall into a high-needs subgroup as well. So, that is telling us that three out of every four students in the city of Chicopee falls within the high-needs category. They fall within two of those subgroups. I thought it was important to add this to give some context of where the tests and how our students took the MCAS for the past four years. So, in 2019, that was our last year pre-pandemic, pre-COVID. Both, all grades three through eight in ELA math, and then five and eight in science in grade 10, took the full test, two sessions in ELA and math, two sessions in science within the same window. In 2020, we did not test at all. That was the remote period that we were shut down for COVID. 2021, because of the disruption of the hybrid remote learning, half of the test was given in grades three through eight, and then the full test was given in grade 10. And then last year, or this past spring, last year's testing cycle, in 2022, we went back to a full testing. So, I added some interesting points on the bottom of this slide. So, thinking of last year's grade 10 students, the last time they took a full MCAS was when they were grade seven. Similarly, grade eight students, last year's grade eight, the last time they took a full MCAS prior to the spring's test was in grade five. And our grade five students didn't take a full MCAS until they got to grade five last year. So, that's, I wanted to throw that in just as a point of context as we go through the different data points throughout the next couple of slides. Grade three through eight, English Language Arts, and I clumped them together because I did this last year as well. And I'll explain, you know, if you were to separate these grades, if there would be a discrepancy. The first thing within this bar graph that I want to do, so this is a Chicopees bar graph, combining the students that fall within the exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, or not meeting expectations. And then, the bar graph right to the right of that is how the state performed as well. The first thing that I do when I look at a graph like this one or this one, I take a look at the red column, the students that are not meeting expectations, and I compare the two to see how big is the gap between the students within Chicopee as compared to the state. So, with this graph, you can see that 25% of our students in grade three through eight in ELA were not meeting standard as compared to 17 at the state. The next thing I do is I take a look and I combine the green, which is meeting expectation, with the blue, which is exceeding. I add those two together, I get a total, and then I compare the two of Chicopee as compared to state to see what that discrepancy or what that difference is as well. So, Chicopee in grade three through eight, 26% fell within meeting or exceeding expectation as compared to 41% for the state. If you drill this down and you start separating the grade levels to look, is there a specific grade level that outperformed another grade level in ELA? There is not. They all pretty much fell within the same, right around that 26% of meeting or exceeding. I'll get further into detail of why the large discrepancy in what we are doing with it. You will see, and if you've read anything within the news, Massachusetts is outside of the trend within the country. Massachusetts saw more decline in their ELA than they did in their math scores, which is an interesting trend within the state as compared to the country. The country saw more of a decline in math than in ELA. When you compare this, and I did not, I don't have a slide prepared, but this group is the only group that saw a decline from where they were in 2021. In the next slides that you'll see, every other group made a progress towards getting back to that pre-pandemic, but this group in three through eight did not. They declined from where they were in 2021. Just for comparison, in 2021, 32% fell within the meeting and exceeding. 2019, 43% were in that meeting or exceeding. But like I said, this is the only group, grade three through eight in ELA, that decreased.
Could you say those numbers again, please?
2021, 32% fell within meeting and exceeding in the city of Chicopee, and in 2019, 43%.
Thank you.
I didn't want to overdate you. That's why I didn't create a slide for you. It also should be pointed out that the state, for accountability purposes, 2022 is the new baseline data. So, they're creating a new baseline for all cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth to start with accountability for next school year. Tenth grade ELA, you see that the not meeting and exceeding, there is no difference. 8% as compared to 8% city of Chicopee as compared to the state. When you add up the meeting expectation and exceeding expectation, you are looking at a 12-point discrepancy, a 58% for the state, and a 46% for the city of Chicopee, for our students here. It's, I want to point out as well, in this, I don't want to get too into the weeds of it, but for a grade 10 student, a grade 10 student doesn't have to fall within the green or blue in order to graduate. They can get into the high, partially-meeting categories to meet the requirements in order for graduation purposes. That's another discussion. We don't need to get into it too much. For the purposes of comparison, so last year, I said 46%. 2021 was 45%, and in 2019, it was 48%. So, our grade 10 ELA is making progress going back towards pre-pandemic. Three through eight mathematics. Looking at the red, there is a discrepancy of 5% Chicopee compared to the state. When you add up the meeting expectations and the exceeding expectations, there's a discrepancy of 14%. Chicopee was at 25% when you add up the blue and the green, the meeting and exceeding as compared to 39 for the state. For comparison purposes, in 2021, this group was at 19% meeting and exceeding, so we're making progress towards that pre-pandemic. And in 2019, they were at 43%. Grade 10 mathematics, there's a discrepancy of 6%, 16% not meeting expectation. When you add up the meeting and exceeding, there is a discrepancy of 12%. It was, the state was at 49% as compared to 37 for the city of Chicopee. In 2021, grade 10 mathematics, 32% were meeting or exceeding, and in 2019, it was 44%. So, this is another area or another grade level that is going back and showing progress to going back to pre-pandemic levels. Grade five and eight, science, 22% as compared to 18% for not meeting expectation. There's a discrepancy of 4% between the two. And then, it's a 32% as compared to a 42% those that are meeting and exceeding. So, there's a discrepancy of 10% for the meeting and exceeding group. As compared to 2021, this same group was at 30% as compared to 2022, which is at 32, and in 2019 was at 43. So, like I said, all groups thus far, other than that first group I showed you, the three through eight ELA, are making progress going back towards pre-pandemic levels. Our grade nine, 10 high school, science test, not meeting, or not meeting expectation is a discrepancy of 2%. It's the 16 compared to 14. That's that red bar. When you add up the green and the blue, the state was at 47% as compared to our 32. And this is a new baseline because they changed the test altogether. They went from a legacy test to a next-gen test. This grade level was the first grade level to take the next-gen science test, so we do not have comparisons as compared to 2021 or 2019. Looking at the data a little differently, we're going to leave the exceeding, meeting, not meeting, partially-meeting expectations, and going into a scaled score. So, the scaled score that you're looking at is the 500. A 500 score gets you into the meeting expectation. So, this is going back now, looking at three through eight ELA, just on a scaled score level. So, we're not looking at meeting expectation, not meeting, but understanding that 500 is the score that you want to fall within that green, that meeting expectation. These are our subgroups as compared to the state. So, when you go a little finer and you break down the data a little bit more, you can see that there are certain subgroups in three through eight that are outperforming the state in three through eight ELA. That is our low income, and that is our Hispanic population, which is right on with the state. You can see that no level in our subgroup in the state hit that 500 for an average scaled score. So, three through eight throughout the state within ELA was an issue and a major concern for the state going forward. Tenth grade ELA, so the green highlighted areas are subgroups that performed at or above as compared to the state. So, this is ELA grade 10. Our low-income, high-needs, and our Hispanic subgroups outperformed the state subgroups in the same grade 10 ELA for an average scaled score. Looking at grade three through eight math, average scaled score, subgroup as compared to the state, we had one group, subgroup, that outperformed the state, and that was our Hispanic subgroup. You can also see there are other groups that were within striking distance of the state. You can see, you know, a .1%, .4, I said percent, point. Grade 10 math, average scaled score, we have a little bit more work to do within our subgroups for grade 10. There are no subgroups in grade 10 math, average scaled score, that outperformed any of the other subgroups throughout the state. Grade five and eight, science, a large number of our subgroups outperformed the state as compared to scaled score. Our EL students, low-income, high-needs, Black and Hispanic And then, grade 10, that kind of fell in line with our grade 10 math. This is our grade 10 science. You can see there's some that are within striking distance, like our low-income, but there are no subgroups that outperformed the state in regards to subgroups. Looking at the data additionally, I put together for how we compare to some of our urban counterparts. When you're looking at it, this is placed in chronological based off of the average scaled score. So, as compared, this is grade three through eight ELA in the selected urban districts, and these are the same ones that I selected last year. I didn't want to overwhelm with all of the urbans throughout, but just the ones that I had selected last year. In our grade three through eight ELA, we are the third in this group for an average scaled score, which goes in line with the third for the meeting and exceeding. Our ELA high school, grade 10, for our, as compared to the urbans, we are the highest average scaled score, but we're just a little, 1% lower than Revere in the meeting and exceeding as compared to the others. Math, three through eight comparison, as compared to other urban districts throughout the Commonwealth, average scaled score, we're right in line with Revere at a 487. Revere's just 2% with the meeting exceeding higher than our students. Math, high school comparison, compared to urbans, the second for average scaled score, but yet we have a higher meeting and exceeding percentage compared to Revere. Five through eight, science, comparison with other urban districts, we have a higher average scaled score and a higher percentage of meeting and exceeding versus those other urban districts. The high school, science comparison, second highest average scaled score, and we're really the third with meeting and exceeding, but this is ranked by average scaled score within our science. So, there's some celebrations throughout the data. Chicopee High is one of our celebrations, and that's going towards pre-pandemic. Are we making progress going back to that 2019 benchmark of where we are? The Chicopee High grade 10 ELA was .3% away from pre-pandemic of those students that fell within meeting and exceeding category. Litwin math, we're above pre-pandemic for their percentage of meeting and exceeding. Belmy and Litwin in their science, so Litwin's grade five and Belmy's grade eight was above pre-pandemic percentage of meeting and exceeding. Stefanik, Litwin, Stryber were above 50% student growth percentile in ELA, which is considered relatively high growth. Fairview and Stryber was above 50% student growth percentile in math. Barry, Bowie, Stefanik, Lambert, Litwin were above 60% student growth percentile, which is very high growth in math. So, that's saying that 60% of their students did better, or their... So that's saying that sixty percent of their students did better, or their students did sixty percent, showed sixty percent more growth than the other counterparts throughout the Commonwealth. Bowie, Lambert, Litwin, and Comp got to pre-pandemic percentile accountability, pre-pandemic. So they went back to twenty nineteen, above where they are ranked percentile in a one to ninety-nine percentile across the Commonwealth. So we had four buildings that did that. So we are showing progress getting back to that recovery to pre-pandemic. On the flip side, we have some areas for improvement, which I will go into greater detail in part two on December seventh. Our early literacy challenges in our learning gaps, you saw in the three through eight in our ELA. Going even further down, looking at our grade three and our four, it is going to take a little while in order to get to their ELA proficiency. They missed out on those second grade, first grade, kindergarten, those foundational skills when we were in hybrid and remote that they missed out on. In grade four, our lower writing scores are at the elementary level. Middle school and high school math, the learning gaps of the foundational skills. As those students began to climb into more complex mathematical concepts, we are in remote, we are in hybrid, we are in disruptive education based off of COVID. Math is building upon, and they were missing some gaps within those foundations that we are going to need to fix. When you look at the three, the three through eight math, our last year's seventh and eighth grade students were the lowest performing in the three through eight. So our high schools freshmen right now need to respond. And we need to respond quickly because the math just gets more difficult as you climb up into the grade levels. Our most concerning issue is that number four, and I probably should have started it as an area for improvement because absentee will feed into the other areas of improvement. Students need to be here in order for those other areas to be improved upon. Chickaby last year was at a forty-one point eight percent chronic absentee. That means in their membership, they missed ten percent of their days in membership. Forty-one percent. Four out of every ten students in the city of Chickaby last year are deemed chronically absent, and if they're not here, we can't teach them. As compared to the urban districts, which were thirty-nine point one, so we are kind of in line with the rest of the urban districts, but forty-one point eight percent. I just, interesting fact that came up that the commissioner shared a little while ago to the superintendents. All of mass districts last year, one point seven million days lost were lost due to positive COVID cases last year. One point seven million school days. That's not taken in consideration that if the student came back from COVID, their teacher wasn't then absent. This is just student absences lost to COVID. In the month of January last year, six hundred and twenty-five thousand days were lost in the state of Massachusetts for COVID cases. The forty-one point eight is appalling, but we need to fix it, and we have plans to fix it, and I'll get into that December seventh. And without fixing chronic absentee, you can't fix anything else. That's the end of part one, so we'll open up to questions that I may be able to answer.
Questions, Don, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to go to that absentee for a minute. When you say one point seven million days were lost to COVID, do we know what we lost to COVID here in Chickaby for the students?
I could get you, I don't have that, those numbers. You know, we tracked it, we had to, yeah.
Assume that's what drove this number up.
Yeah, we had to track it at that point, and at some point last year, you know, the quarantine, they decreased the quarantining also. We still have the five-day, you know, home for COVID. We have seen, and I'll get into it in December seventh, you know, we have a partnership for a dashboard that we're able to see real time. One of the reports that I pull regularly is our chronic absentee for all our buildings across, across the district, but I can get you that information on how much was lost.
You made an interesting point. If you've lost kids out of your class that had COVID, chances are they came back and the teacher's now out with the COVID that they caught from that student. So now the student, even though they're in school, is still kind of out.
There's that continued disruption, right? Yeah.
Oh, and there's one, on one of the slides, you said there was only one that, there was one you missed that we actually caught up to, it was low income.
Which slide was that? Did I not highlight it?
Highlighted, but the number was higher, so I would.
Well, thank you.
It's always good to have.
I appreciate that.
I'll find it and tell you what it is later.
Grace, do you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of comments and then a question, please. So first of all, thank you for the very comprehensive data and explanation. I appreciate it, and I was pleasantly surprised with the science scores, so that was encouraging to me. And lastly, for the, like, viewing audiences, could you just explain the criteria used to pick the cities that you compared Chickaby to?
That's a good question. I don't know if I can answer that. They were, most of the, you're saying the urbans ones, the urban districts that I did, demographically, size, I mean, when you start getting into enrollment sizes, I tried to get the closest urbans to us to compare.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you all set, Grace? Sam?
I just have a question, or first I want to say thank you for this presentation, but my question was in regards to the new scoring system that they have from legacy to next-gen. What would proficient, back then was two forty, what is proficient now with this new grading system?
Five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Tim?
Thank you. You mentioned chronic absenteeism quite a bit at the end there. Obviously, it's important that we deal with it. Did this, this number, I assume that shot up a lot as COVID nineteen became an issue? What were those numbers looking like beforehand? Were they on the decline at all?
You're saying pre-pandemic with chronic absenteeism? I don't have that. I mean, as compared to, you know, yesterday when I looked at our chronic absentee, and remind you, it's ten percent of their membership. So, you know, we're in day fifty of enrollment, that would be a student with five absences. So it's a moving target. Right now, the district is right around twenty, below twenties for chronic absenteeism. You have the opportunity with, you know, initiatives that you're putting in place as more school days that are, you are acquiring, in addition to other pieces within that, I project that that chronic absentee is going to come down off of that twenty percent.
Thank you, I appreciate that answer. Thank you. Any other questions? Sure, Doug and then Ron.
Thank you. Mr. Francis, we had the Student Advisory Council in a few weeks ago, and I know one of the topics was a later start time to the day. What do you think that that would do, if anything? Would that help with, you know, kids showing up, or?
Yeah, that's, I haven't put much thought into it. Actually, it's interesting you bring that up because in Education Week, periodical that gets put out weekly, it was, it was the flip side of actually having elementary students starting earlier, was the article, and how they, there is no negative research or data that is showing that an early start time on elementary students would have a negative effect on elementary students. In regards to, and taking out the transportation piece and doing a tier-one, tier-two bus system and trying to tackle that, you know, I, I, I look at my own child, who is a junior in high school, who is a sleeper, and I don't necessarily think, I mean, I think of him on the weekends, it's eleven o'clock, I'm trying to get him out of bed in order to do something. I don't know that that is a solution. I really don't. I don't, I don't think the start time is going to positively affect student performance that greatly that I think that we have to take a strong look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ron was next, and then Sandra.
Thank you, Mr. Francis, for the presentations. The one question I had is, I know we always, some of us are former teachers, we always looked at the impact we could have on some of the students or all the students, move them up to the next category. And a lot of times you look at the students that are close to getting to that next category, you know? And so my question was, because I noticed that we fared really well in the partially meeting expectations compared to mostly the state. So how close, when you say partially meeting expectations, is that to meeting expectations? What is that difference? Is there?
And you can take, yeah, there is a, you know, a mathematical split of X amount of points, and you're right in saying, I can look at that partially meeting into three categories. A low partially meeting, right, that is very close to not meeting, the middle of the road, and those what we deem as bubble students that could, or at the high end of that partially meeting. So they're within that ten, those ten points, you know, the, from the four, you know, within the four nineties, in order to move those up. So it's, it's an approach, you know, those bubble students, what do they need in order to get? But I also have to remember those not meetings and whatnots. But typically, when I look at the data at the building level, I'm looking at that partially meeting category as well, to see what percentage of the students fell in those, in one of those three categories, the low partially meeting, right in the middle of it, or at the high end. And how can, what can I differentiate for that student or give that student to move them?
So the average to the next category is about ten percent for the whole?
You're talking points?
Or ten points, I mean, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, roughly.
Thank you.
Sandra?
Do you look at that information, the partially meeting, and how our students are falling? Like, the numbers of students that are in the high level and the?
Buildings will drill that down even further. And it's a matter of, when I start to look at vacation week, extra help, or after-school work and things like that, do I go after those students at the detriment of going after a student who's going to need more intervention? When you look at that, like, red category, those are students that typically need intensive intervention within the not-meeting categories. Those that are falling within the partially-meeting categories need a little bit of intervention. So you have to, you have to divvy up your resources, and how am I going to work with the students that need intensive intervention and just a little bit of intervention? But the buildings, and speaking, you know, fifteen years at the building level, I knew exactly where, within that partially meeting, as Mr. Bernard was talking about, I knew exactly who those students were and where they were falling. Not that I neglected the other, other groups at all, but when you're looking at it for, how do I get more bang for my buck in order for accountability, not that we stack everything up for accountability purposes, but a student who can get you, you know, from a four ninety now goes into a meeting expectation, gets you student growth, their student growth is typically higher, the percentage for meeting and exceeding then has a positive impact, but you can't forget about those more, those more intensive interventions for those not-meeting.
Right, so you're still, you still need the attention to be focused on those that aren't meeting, and why aren't they?
Correct.
Not meeting?
Correct.
And the numbers that are there. Thank you.
Everybody has to improve. I mean, it's, that's what it boils down to. Some students have more that they have to improve and will take longer and more intensive needs over a longer period of time. Some will just need a quick intervention, and they're able to, you know, that lightbulb to go off.
Thank you. Are you all set?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Don?
In the red categories, the ones that are failing, I heard what you said, we got to try to help them get out of the red category. In that red category, is there a percentage that is severe special needs, or are they off this test altogether?
Your severe special needs are on MCAS AL, and not to get too big into the weeds, but any student that is on an MCAS AL automatically falls into that red category, regardless of how they're doing on the MCAS AL, they fall within the not-meeting. That's a whole other discussion.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I want to thank Matt for that presentation for part one, and it looks like we are, I think the name couldn't be more appropriate, on the road to recovery. So thank you for that. Approval of minutes, twenty-two dash eleven dash nine.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on November second, two thousand twenty-two be approved.
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Any discussion in the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Reports, twenty-two dash eleven dash ten.
Report on personnel action taken. There are no retirements in this report.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business.
I have a question, just a comment.
Oh, yes, question.
Just on this report, again, I noticed that there's several employees who resigned after just a short period of time. A team chairperson at Lambert-Lavoie was here only a month, a cafeteria worker at Bellamy was here less than a month, a kindergarten teacher at Stefanik was here for like two months and nine days, a math teacher was at Bellamy for two months. Just, again, this is, we had a previous report at a past meeting where we had employees who were here for short periods of time like this, a month or two months. Do we take a look at what we're doing with the new people that are coming in and what we might, how we are interacting with new people, and looking to retain them? Because certainly, people who are leaving after a month or two months is a loss of education for our students, and it just, just seems startling that we have people who are here for such a short period of time.
We do, we do the exit surveys, and we try to figure out a variety of reasons of what's, some of them already had put in for jobs in other districts, and they came about in that time period. Some people get into, like, the cafeteria workers get into it and may not like it, so we try to find the reasons why and try to work on anybody else that may come in. But there's a variety of reasons why people are leaving. And some of it is because of the dysregulation of students right now, but a lot of it is people are going to other districts, and we've had other people that you may see resign one position, have got appointed to another position.
It just, you know, again, it's surprising that if people are leaving, you know, teachers, for example, educators, if they're going to another system, what can we do to engage them here and entice them to stay? You know, is that, is that something that we could be using the ESSR money funds for to, for stipends for our teachers to stay, or for the work that they do?
We've previously done that already with the ESSR money.
Can we not do it again?
That's not something we had put in there or budgeted for from their perspective. Some of it is money, money that they have, you know, districts pay higher, or whatever the situation may be.
Yeah, like, as I said, it's just surprising that we have people who stay for such a short period of time, but thank you for the information.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? New business, twenty-two dash eleven dash eleven.
Move that the bills warrant S-110422, total in one million, six hundred and four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirteen cent be approved.
Motion to approve. Thank you. Don, Chet, would you like to read the warrants into the record?
I sure will.
Thank you.
There are two warrants to be responded to. The first one is athletics, twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. Food services, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. General expenses, one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Grants, one million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Transportation, three thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. Maintenance, sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Reimbursements, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Student activities, eight hundred and five dollars. Telecommunications, two thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars, for a total of one million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. Telecommunications, $2,247, for a total of $1,955,711.
Thank you. Any questions about the first warrant? That's S110422 for 1.6 million and change. Seeing none, Sarah, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries. New business by committee members to my left. All set to my left, to my right. Anyone new business? Just a point of information, we have on our agenda an executive session. That issue has been resolved. The school committee will not be heading into executive session, so that concludes our regular meeting. Can I enter, can someone give me a motion to adjourn? We have motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Happy Thanksgiving to the viewing audience, and, and hopefully everyone has a healthy, healthy Thanksgiving.
Recording.[1749.13]